Okay, thank you, and I'm meeting today. Hello?
Go ahead, we got you.
Okay, thank you. So again, welcome to the Thursday, April 21st, 2022, 6:00 PM meeting of the Auburn zoning board of appeals. My name is Robert Cato. I am the chairman. Please bear with me when I read through a couple of scripts. Okay, again, so here we go. Uh, zoning board of appeals participation script. We're gonna confirm member access first. So this open meeting of the town of Auburn zoning board of appeals is being operated as a hybrid format under chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. The public can join the meeting remotely by telephone at 16467493112. Access code 944571349, or join by computer by visiting globalgotomeeting.com. In the upper right corner, you'll see an access join. 944571349 is the number that you need to put in to join us. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along, use the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, as I already mentioned, my name is Robert Cato. I am the acting chair of the Auburn zoning board of appeals. Remember me to confirm that all members and persons participating anticipated on the agenda participate remotely, uh, present and can hear me. So for the members, roll call. If I call your name, could you please answer in the affirmative? Vice Chair Michael Maron.
Affirmative.
Mr. Cusi.
Affirmative.
Mr. Chacolo.
Affirmative.
I was notified earlier that Megan Roach will not be with us this evening. Ms. Bush, are you present?
I'm here.
Excellent. Okay, so we're all in order. Uh, town officials and employees participate in the meeting. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Are you present?
Present.
Chief Heseltine, are you present?
Present.
He's here, Bob.
Ah, gotcha. Thank you. Uh, Caleb Mooney, you present, sir?
I am.
Thank you. Do we have any else from the town side that needs to introduce themselves by any chance?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. As with all meetings, the chair asks if anyone recorded the meeting. Um, you have the right to record, but you have to disclose. So, uh, if that is the case, please do so. Oh, let's state, please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television, which it actually is, or this remote meeting is being recorded through remote platform, which it also is. Um, if there are applicants participating remotely, please state your name and address, um, for the remote purpose right now. Is there anyone joining us remotely that may want to speak on this matter this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we have the applicant present in the room.
Okay, perfect. So they'll go through my script. So, um, if you have any questions, please let me know. We're gonna go back to our session here. Okay, so, uh, do I have a motion to open the 6:00 PM hearing? Applicant Caratella Incorporated requesting a special permit under section 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an Aquifer special permit on property located at 317 South Street, MAP 25, parcel 27. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing as stated.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So I have a motion to open from Mr. Vice Chair Maron, and a second from Mr. Chacolo. Roll call vote. Um, Mr. Maron, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote, sir?
Approve.
Mr. Cusi, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. The hearing is open. Uh, is the applicant present, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You want to take Ms. Bush's vote if she's the fifth member tonight?
Oh, I apologize. So let me, uh, I was thinking we had enough for form. So, uh, for the record, because Ms. Roach is not with us this evening, I'll be moving Ms. Bush to open it up to full voting member. Uh, Ms. Bush, do I have your, uh, vote to open the hearing?
Yes, approve.
Thank you so much. And Caleb, thank you for catching that. Okay, so again, is the applicant present?
Yes, I guess I am.
Okay. Okay, so we have a, um, applicant's voice. I'm gonna put it over. I'm sorry. I'm getting a little background noise, and I apologize. That's why I'm sounding so smooth on this end. Um, we're getting some interruptions in the background. I'm not sure if it was a dog barking or something, so if we kind of curtail that, I would appreciate it. So again, sir, I apologize. Could you introduce yourself again?
Yes, I'm present. My name is Edwin Hilario.
Great, thank you very much. I'm gonna yield before to you, please, and you can go ahead and, uh, give us an overview of what you're trying to accomplish.
What I tried to do then, um, as of right now, I do have a, um, this company is open in Worcester, 350 Harding Street, and the plan is that I can open a second location here in Auburn, 317 South Street. Um, this is as a rental car business. I also included in there a, um, dealer license just for the purpose of resell my vehicle once they out of the fleet.
All right, do you have any else you want to add before I turn it over to, uh, the members of the board?
No.
Okay, um, Vice Chair Maron, to you, sir. I yield before. If you'd like to ask any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, to the applicant, what, what kind of, um, other than rental car business, um, you're gonna be refurbishing cars? What kind of work will you be doing on the cars on site?
We would, um, clean the vehicle, or, you know, just, uh, when we, the vehicle, obviously, when they go out, they need to be cleaned when they come back. In some cases, if we have like a light bulb replacement, or maybe a light replaced, I'm not sure if that's, uh, something that I'd be able to do there, but that type, um, a small assembly.
Okay, so are you gonna be doing any oil changes or any, any maintenance on the cars, any auto body work?
No.
Okay, and no, no auto mechanic work at all?
No, apart from the, just, uh, those minor repair, like, that I mentioned, like a broken headlight or taillight or light bulb replacement.
Okay, thank you. Um, if I may, um, just a couple of questions for the building commissioner. This lot, as I understand it, um, portion that he's purchasing, there's, there's a business on existing on the right side of that property, um, in perspective of the applicant. That's not your business, is that correct?
Not my business, no.
Okay, so you're gonna be on the left side of that current existing business?
Mm-hmm.
Given that that's the same brick and mortar, are those completely separated, or is that a dual use on that property?
So then that, if that's two uses on the property, that special permit would be with the planning board. So, once, if the ZBA chose to issue a Aquifer special permit, he would need a special permit with the planning board, and also site plan approval with the planning board for multiple business use.
Okay, thank you. And, and then if I come back to the applicant, so, um, are you planning any renovations or construction on site?
Uh, renovation, yes.
Will you change the footprint in any way, or the renovations interior only?
As of right now, no.
Okay, so it's just interior only?
Right, interior and outside, you know, the roof, and just regular, regular maintenance for the doors.
Okay, but, but keeping the same footprint, or we're not expanding or, or making any changes to the structure?
No, no, as of right now.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, that's all for, I'm gonna hold any further questions, um, as we move forward in the hearing, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I appreciate that. Mr. Chacolo, to you, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a clarification with our building inspector, so that that second use would have to be included on the special permit?
So the planning board is the special permit granting authority? The planning board is the special permit granting authority in the, in the local business district. Um, so the zoning board will only be issuing a special permit for the Aquifer, inside the Aquifer 2 zone.
And as a building inspector, would you be informing them of that need?
Yeah, they already received a zoning interpretation request that says they need a special permit from the planning board, as well as site plan approval from the planning board.
And?
In addition to the Aquifer.
Of the opinion that the, um, used car license would have to come from the selectment?
Yes, the selectment of the licensing authority for the.
Okay, and is, to the applicant, is anybody currently using the backside garage entrance downstairs? Is anybody using those facilities?
They're personally in the, in the right side of the building. That person using the garage door as of right now.
The person that's currently in the building is also using that?
Yes.
Are they using it for any, uh, vehicle maintenance?
Um, honestly, I'm not sure what they do there, because since they have a lease, lease for the property, I kind of just limited to overlook. But I mean, they, he had a permit. I'm pretty sure he came here for a permit, so he may have some instruction what he could do there and what could not do there.
So, I'm having a terrible time understanding you, just because of the.
Right, right.
Base and the.
I'm saying that the person that is there, which is Papa Auto Mohammed, I believe that's his name, he's, uh, using that garage door there. I honestly, I cannot say, he's not doing any repairs, as far as I know. I didn't see any oil or anything there, or no sign of oil being done, oil or service. But, um, I seen him cleaning car there. I look over the window, you know, and he's, he's cleaning car in there. And, uh, I can see him replacing small item.
Is he doing car detailing there?
Uh, well, he's on vehicle. He's on, he's on car, not the vehicle that he's offering for sale. But I haven't, physically, I saw, I haven't even seen him doing it, but I mean, I seen vehicle inside the garage. So that's, well, that's type of service he's maybe doing out there, and, you know.
So anything that you have to do would be done?
We're gonna share the, the space until he's, because he had a lease for a year and a half now, about a year. So, uh, I'm gonna keep him there until then, and then after that, I'm gonna be using myself.
And, and again, to our building inspector, what we're here to do is just say that this would be, uh, a legal use in the Aquifer 2 district?
The zoning, yeah, the zoning board's role would be to either issue or not issue a special permit inside the Aquifer 2 zone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you all set, Mr. Chacolo?
I am, and thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Cusi, to you?
Yeah, uh, so all repairs, oil changes, any mechanical stuff will be done off-site?
Right. We do have a, uh, garage in Worcester that we own, and that's where all the service is gonna be done there.
Okay, so strictly just cleaning?
Right. And I also, uh, I put that information in there, in there where I'm gonna be doing the service for my vehicle, the regular service.
All right, I'm good for now. I'm good, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Bush?
Uh, I think my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, obviously, I think Caleb has reiterated enough that we're really just here to talk about the Aquifer protection of the, uh, area, and here's the concerns that I have. Uh, I have it up on Google Maps in front of me right now, um, just for the purpose of viewing it, you know, while we're discussing. And I'm not sure if this is the case, but it, it's definitely been split in half, if not, what, three? Is there three potential businesses operating out of this building right now, Caleb?
I don't believe that we've permitted any businesses in this location.
Okay, so we have Gervais Plumbing and Heating operating there, and then?
I believe, I believe Gervais Plumbing and Heating has moved down the street to their new location.
Ah, okay, so I see the sign there. I wasn't sure if they actually did that. Okay. So, um, that was really my concern. So I, I can see the parking there. And how many, you anticipate how many cars you'll have on site?
How many cars? An average of about 15 vehicle. Most of the time, they, they're not there, but an average of 15.
So you're gonna have an average of about 15 vehicles on site, and what about employees?
Right, that's, you know, when they're not out, you know, when, let's say in the low season, because most of the time they're out, we just completely empty.
Right, yeah, I understand. Like, so you rent the car, people come pick it up, and it's usually empty on the road, is the idea, but what about the number of employees on site, and anything?
Can you say that again?
Number of employees on site.
Two.
Employees.
Two, two employees.
Two employees, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I'm just trying, I'm counting my parking spots here. So if we go, you know, I'm really just, I know that we're not really worried about the parking as much as we are, but I'm worried about the number of cars, the potential, obviously. Um, one of the things I would have for a concern, one of the other, uh, businesses in the Aquifer protection zone, is to require things like a spill kit to be on site. Um, so I'd like to see things like that. But again, uh, that's all I really have. So, um, do I have any butters present? That would like to see things better? Last call for butters. Five, four, three, two, one. Okay, so hearing none, seeing none. Uh, the motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before we close, um, would you entertain just another question to the applicant, please?
Absolutely, I apologize.
No. No apology necessary. And, sir, one of the things that you had said on your previous test 20 that caught my interest, and Caleb, um, correct me first if, um, if this is beyond our skis, if this isn't in our view. Um, the applicant had indicated that when the current occupant that's there in the business on the right-hand side, when that lease runs through, um, that he intends, um, and I'm gonna ask him to confirm in a moment, but he intends to take over that space, I believe is what he alluded to, and then occupy the entire space. Um, would that be anything that we need to entertain as far as additional services, um, expansion of his business, or, or any, any of those topics?
I, I don't believe so. It would, it would be going from two of the same use to one, one use, so I don't believe it would require any further permitting.
Okay, no, very good. I, I appreciate that. And I'm, um, just, uh, to keep myself honest, so is, is that your intention, that eventually you're gonna occupy that entire space?
Right.
Um, and then just one final question on the same line. So will your business change in any way with the addition of, or are you gonna keep the same services, just more space to do it?
Same service.
Okay, all right. Thanks for letting me ask that question. Mr. Chairman, I'm good. I don't have anything further, sir.
Excellent, okay, um, just to go along the horn one more time. Mr. Chacolo, do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cusi?
I'm all set, Bob, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Bush?
I have nothing to add.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so I think we're comfortable enough now where, if I wanna, uh, ask for a motion to close the hearing, should I have one, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
I'll second.
Not the whole hearing, just the public portion.
Yes, the public portion, public portion of the hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
What? Okay, roll call vote for the closing of the public portion of the hearing only? Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cusi?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay, uh, one more time around. Uh, Vice Chair Maron, do you have any comments, concerns, thoughts?
No concerns, uh, but for, for open discussion for the board. So you, Bob, you had mentioned earlier spill kit. My expectation, and Caleb can confirm this, but site planning, um, would cover those topics, is that correct?
Yes, the applicant would need a special permit for the multiple business use, and also site plan approval from the planning board.
Okay, so they, they would cover, um, necessity for spill kits for, um, any parking considerations as far as volume, um, those types of things? And I don't know if this is gonna have to go to the conservation commission, uh?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, very good. Um, so Bob, I, um, if I may, I think what's before us, based on the special permit just being in an Aquifer 2 district, um, and if that's what's before us, um, the, the special permit authority here is the planning board. So I think the planning board has, um, if I assume correctly, the, the heavy lifting on, on site planning to vet exactly what's gonna happen on this property.
Correct, I agree. Um, and they certainly are capable of doing so. I just wanted to make sure that we understand that in the past, we've had special permits issued to the Aquifer Protection Zone 2, but we also added conditions if we needed to have certain things, levels on site. So anyway, that's all the reason I was going to that point of, uh, the number of spaces and whatnot. So, okay, so, um.
Right, no, Bob, if I may, I, I don't disagree, and I'll, uh, don't interrupt if anyone else wanted to speak, but, um, but I, as far as the spill kit and the conditions of what they need to add, I think the, just for me, I think the planning board takes that on. But for us, um, given the testimony we've heard this evening, I think that we can, I would be comfortable with making, um, an addendum to, um, the conditions, um, so that there's no, um, there's no, um, car work being done. Um, that's not the right phrase, but, um, we condition it so that there's no repair work being done, um, to the vehicles on site.
All right, um, if that's I had, do I have any other members of the board, uh, that have thought about, Mr. Chacolo?
You have any thoughts, sir?
About, uh, conditioning affairs? Would that, would that be within our jurisdiction to do that? Then I'm for it.
Uh, Mr. Cusi?
Yeah, I agree. I'll, I'll go with the conditions.
All right, Ms. Bush?
Uh, I'm fine with the conditions that were stated.
Okay, so, um, if there does not appear to be any further discussion, do I have a motion on the 6:00 PM hearing, or? I'm sorry, I'm getting some kind of a background or feedback here. Um, is somebody looking to speak?
Bob, there's a lot of microphones in this room, so you hear every paper that rustles when you're virtual.
Yeah, believe it. I do appreciate that, but it's actually, um, it's TH Audio. Uh, it's just somebody making some noise in the background. It's actually a voice that's starting to rustle. That's okay.
TH Audio, TH Audio is us, Bob.
Okay, so we have, uh, 6:00 PM applicant Caratella Incorporated requesting a special permit under section 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an Aquifer special permit on property located at 317 South Street, MAP 25, parcel 27. A motion.
So, Bob, um, Michael Maron, Vice Chair, I'll make a, um, motion to approve, um, most, the, um, the applicant is, the application is stated, um, with standard conditions in addition to, um, no vehicle repair work being done on site.
Second.
Thank you very much. Okay, for a roll call vote, so I have, uh, Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cusi?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Congratulations, sir. You can be in touch with the Department of Inspeccional Services, and they'll proceed you, uh, uh, teach me to proceed to the next round.
Thank you.
All right, have a great night. So the motion to close the 6:00 PM hearing?
Through the chair.
Yes.
You would not need a motion to close, given that the, the application was approved, it is closed.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that was really all we had for a hearing? Uh, I did, hang on one second, I apologize. My neighbor's dog is visiting. Please stand by. Okay, sorry, sorry about that. My neighbor's dog decided he wanted to come over and visit for a second. So anyway, um, I went, I had a complaint call today. I just wanted to let you know about this. Um, and I visited Mr. Lindblom, um, who, uh, bought the 40B project over on, uh, off of Tinker Hill Road. Um, he expressed some concerns to me about them, um, clear cutting up to the property lines that are at Butters. Um, they have been kind of in, from what I understand, allegedly, I just want to declare on that, that they, um, have violated the agreements in terms of, I know Mr. Maron was very concerned with enforcing start times, and, uh, there's been some allegations of abusing that particular, um, agreement. And I know that Mr. Chacolo had issues with trucks running through the facility at what time, uh, different things like that, and, uh, you know, he's allegedly found and counted quite a few trailer trucks that are not abiding by the, um, I guess, traffic layout agreement as well. Um, so I just wanted to make the members aware of that, and I believe that he was gonna call in if he wanted to join us this evening. Um, Mr. Lindblom, are you present?
I'm on the phone, sir, if you can hear me.
I can. Um, so, this is really just on the new business. Uh, I'm gonna actually just kinda, hopefully I, I talked about what was really going on. Um, and if you want to kind of express your concerns, if you could help me, sir, go ahead.
Yes, sir, and the board members, thank you very much. A lot of the other concerns I had mentioned were past concerns that have been, have slowed down recently. I probably didn't state that as well, but the issues of the traffic timeframe, um, and vehicles starting up, those were issues that we had before. We seem to have cleaned those up with, uh, inspectional services going down there. The issues that we're having at the moment is more so on why everything has to be clear cut up to all the property lines, um, is, is the issue that we're having with the amount of land that's there and the way how the layout is. Um, I, I think it's either 86 acres, there's about 17 houses up here or, or so, up on the Tinker Hill area, and now as of Monday, they're setting up everything to be clear cutting right up to everyone's property lines. That's the issue that we're having at the moment.
Okay, so, um, I, you know, I wanted to give it the opportunity to speak, because I think it's important to understand, like, there's not much we can do as sort of civilian volunteers, if you will, but we wanted to make sure that people's voices are heard. That's really my concern. And when, under, agreements that are enforceable to a degree, um, in order to help the Butters and try to minimize the impact on their lifestyle, you know, I, I don't know, to me, I feel like, um, if the agreement is being deliberately ignored, it can be frustrating, and I think that needs to be straightened out. Um.
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, you may, absolutely.
So, back when the ZBA approved this 40B project, the ZBA did approve a waiver to the buffer zone requirement. Um, DAS has been working with the developer and reminding them of the start times and their restrictions as far as that goes, but I do not know that there's anything that the board can do at this point.
Right.
When, when it comes to the.
And I agree. I, I stress those myself when I was, uh, talking to, um, Mr. Lindblom, and I do understand the frustration, and, and again, with the permits being issued. Um, I just, I think I want to give an opportunity to have a public forum to know that we still want to hear the complaints. Just because the permits have been issued, doesn't mean the responsibility kind of closes and goes away, I guess. Um.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Lindblom.
No, I was gonna say, I understand, I appreciate that, and like I said, it was just trying to figure out why with the size of the building that they have, the land that they have, why they have to come up to pretty much every one property line, not just one or two locations, but it's down the whole script, that they are coming right up to everyone's land.
Hmm, um, well, I, I don't really have an answer for you, unfortunately, but what I can do is, I can request that, um, keep this meeting with the, uh, with the security of the property, that maybe the Department of Inspeccional Services can just make mention to be a little bit more cautious around the, uh, property lines.
Yes, I understand. Jerry has been phenomenal. I've already spoken with him, I've spoken with Caleb, and everybody's been, everybody's been helpful, the same, saying pretty much thing, which is, the permit's been approved. I'm just trying to help. Hopefully, again, we can be given a buffer at the end with the fact that, again, a majority of the people up here, not everyone, but a majority of the people up on this part of the, uh, land have all been here for, you know, 25, 30-plus years. And again, I understand that they bought the property, um, and they can do what they want. We're just trying to have some form of a buffer zone before there's 340 units packed right in. Another thing of the annoyance is, is, again, the way how they have everything kind of set up is one of the peak locations of where all of their recreational area is gonna be, from what I, we, you know, understand, for the four houses that are in one area, it. from what I, we, you know, understand, for the four houses that are in one area, it, it abuts their property by about, abuts their property by about forty feet or so. For where their parking is, someone up, like the snow remote, the snow drop off is, some lights, the trash isn't all that far away. We're just looking to have some form of a buffer when this is all done and said, 'cause right as of now, there does not seem to be any. And that's all my statement is, and I greatly appreciate it.
All right, I appreciate your time, sir. Information is absolutely duly noted, believe me. I know the members of the board do not appreciate when they go out of their way to seek, uh, agreements with applicants only to have them ignored. I know that the board does not appreciate those types of activities. Um, so I am bringing those forward. And I'm certain that the Department of Inspection Services will absolutely address those concerns.
Outstanding. Thank you all, um, gentlemen, ma'am. Appreciate it, and I hope you have a great evening.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and I really do appreciate you getting involved, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Enjoy.
Okay, so I do apologize also to the board. I just went and looked at this before the meeting began. I got home from this visit at about quarter or six. So I wa, I really wanted to inform the board and surprise, not surprise everybody, um, but the meeting kind of got, the time got away from me, unfortunately. So if it was a surprise to anyone, I do apologize. So with that being said, uh, other members of the board, um, do you have any questions or concerns?
Uh, no, no ques, no questions, Bob. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chacolo?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Cussey?
No questions, Bob.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
No questions.
Great, thank you. Okay, so that's really it. Our next meeting is May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. We will continue the same routine of the six o'clock PM start time, being both a hybrid recruit or access. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, a mo, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Marin?
I approve.
Uh, Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussey?
Prove.
Uh, Ms. Bush?
Approve.
And I approve. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned. We'll see you next month.